Okay.
All right, shall we begin? All right. We will go ahead and call the July 7, 2022 Newport Beach Planning Commission meeting to order, and we will start, as we always do, with our Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Elmore will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Elmore. Move on to our roll call.
All Commissioners are present this evening with the exception of Commissioner Klostermeyer, who is excused.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Section 4 here, and this is going to be the election of officers for our new term for this year, and so this is the time that both for the Chair, the Vice Chair, and Secretary nominations, and so if anybody would like to make a motion, and then if someone would like to second that.
Yeah, I'll take the lead of that. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Kleiman to be our Chair, Commissioner Elmore to be our Vice Chair, and Commissioner Rosin to be our Secretary.
Are there any other nominations to that? If not, I would like to second.
I'm going to take a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
I'm sorry, we do need to take public comment on this.
Oh, we do need to take public comment on this one? Okay, well, then we will open this up to public. I apologize about that. We'll take this up for public comments, so if there's anyone in the public that would like to come up and speak to this specific item, feel free to come on up. All right. Seeing that there are no comments, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section, and we'll go back to our, I guess, quick nomination there, and we'll continue with the motion that's on the floor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations on your new roles, Chair Kleiman, Vice Chair Elmore, and Secretary Rosin.
All right, I will bring the gavel over to our new chairwoman.
Can we do a little dosey-doe? I'm going to kick Secretary out of this seat. Channel the magic of Larry Tucker in this seat. Okay. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda this evening, are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to requests for continuances. Staff, do we have any requests this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we are going to request a continuance for item number five, and we'll need a vote for that when that item comes up to move it to the next meeting. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
That will come forward when that item is called.
Oh, thank you. Moving on to our public hearing items, we'll start with our presentation for...
Madam Chair, so we can go to the consent?
My apologies. Okay, consent items, I apologize. Item number two, minutes for the June 9 meeting. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from the June 9 meeting?
Chair Kleiman, members of the Commission, my name, as most of you know, is Jim Mosher, and as most of you know, I frequently submit suggested changes to minor errors that I notice in the minutes when I read them, and I just want to report I did carefully read the minutes of the June 9 meeting, and I noticed no errors in them. So, I wanted to tell whoever on the staff prepares them, good job, well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Is that a first?
I think so.
Let the record reflect, first time. Okay, call for motion.
I'll make the motion with kudos to Clarabelle and the team for putting those together correctly with no edits.
I'll second.
The motion carries 5-0 with Commissioner Harris Epstein.
Okay, now, moving on to public hearing items. Staff, do we have a presentation on item number three, the McGinnis residence?
Yes, good evening, Chair Kleiman and to the Planning Commission, good evening. My name is David Lee with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the McGinnis residence, coastal development permit and variance located at 4607 Seashore Drive. This project is a first coastal development permit for the demolition of an existing duplex and the construction of a new single-family residence with a junior accessory dwelling unit. There's also a variance requested for a side staircase and a front entry staircase to deviate from the maximum height within the setback areas, and I'd like to note that the project is located within the VE flood zone, which I will touch upon later in my This is the vicinity map. As you can see, the project is highlighted in red. It's located on Seashore Drive, a budding west oceanfront between 46th and 47th Street. The zoning is R2 for two-unit residential. As previously stated, this lot is located within the VE flood zone, which is a special flood hazard zone designated by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA. This is relatively new to the city, as it became effective on March 21, 2019. It requires for buildings to be elevated, as you can see in that picture, to protect against wave and flood damage, so the finished floor will be elevated above a base flood elevation and to allow waves to go under the construction. This is the location of the VE flood zone. As you can see, it spans from 48th Street down to 24th Street. The properties in yellow are VE flood zone 15 feet, which is base flood elevation 15 feet, and the ones in purple are for 13 feet, which is lower. The subject property is located on the top of the map, as you can see, and so it's part of the VE flood zone for 15 feet. I'm going to use the proposed project section here to demonstrate how the flood zone works in relation to the project. This red line here demonstrates the existing grade. It's approximately 12 to 13 feet above sea level, and prior to the VE flood zone, you would measure the overall height of the building from the average grade using this red line, the existing grade. However, with the VE flood zone now, there's a base flood elevation of 15 feet above sea level. There's also a one-foot freeboard requirement, which is additional space between the base flood elevation and the finished floor. And finally, in yellow, you see the finished floor construction, which is, for this project, at 17.33 feet. And now, with the VE zone, the height is going to be measured from the top of the finished floor, so you're going to go maximum 29 feet high from that 17.33 finished floor Just to note that garages are allowed to be built on the existing grade for access for the vehicles, but they are constructed of breakaway material, which are guidelines from FEMA. So, just looking at this house in general, you can see the design is a split-level design, and that occurs because of that finished floor requirement. If you look at the third floor, it's a reduced third floor design to reduce the visual impacts, and the design overall is contemporary, and which I'll show you in later slides. So, the coastal development permit, the project complies with all of these development standards, including floor area, height, setbacks, parking, so it complies with all of these standards. There is a variance that is being requested, and that is twofold. The first is entryway staircase in the side yard setback that serves the junior accessory dwelling unit, as you can see in pink right there. It's located above the garage. And as you can see, I just want to point out that there is a lot of interior stairs designed to, in order to accommodate the VE zone higher finished floor. So, if you moved the JADU stairs inside the house, it would further complicate the design and take away livable floor area from the design. The second aspect of the variance is oceanfront patio stairs. As you can see, it allows direct access from the living room down onto the oceanfront patio in blue on the left. Just a rendering of the entryway stairs, as you can see, is highlighted in red on the side yard setback. The zoning code maximum is 18 inches, where the proposed stair is 28 inches high. It's above the existing grade in the side yard setback, so it's a 10-inch deviation For the oceanfront patio stairs, this is a view from when you're standing on the beach looking at the house. You can see the access stairs that come down in red there, and that connects the living room to the patio. The zoning code maximum is 3'6", and the proposed stair, which measures to the top of the guardrails, which are glass, is approximately 8 feet, so there's a 4'5" deviation there. Staff believes that the findings are met, as the VE zone requires a high-finished floor of 17.33, and the existing grade elevation is low at 12 feet and 13 feet, so it's very difficult or even impossible to design exterior access without exceeding the maximum height limits in the setbacks. Without the side entry stairs, you would have additional interior stairs to get up to that 17.33-foot finished floor elevation, which would further reduce livable floor area, and without the front patio stairs, there's no direct access onto the oceanfront patio. The accessory structures are not detrimental to the neighbors, and the residence itself does not impede public access or views of the ocean. Important note is that there's a pending zoning code and local coastal program amendment that's ongoing. It would eliminate the need for future variance, which I just described, as it addresses the access issues of the height differential within the VE zone. This amendment was initiated by the City Council on March 26, 2019, so staff's been working on this with previous community meetings already conducted, and they'll be back to the City Council on July 26 for a study session, and they'll come to the Planning Commission. The target is fall of 2022. And just to note that after, if it's approved by the Planning Commission and City Council, the Coastal Commission approval would also be required. So, with all that said, staff recommends to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and adopt the resolution approving the project. My name is David Lee, so if you have any questions, let me know, and the applicant, Frank Stoltz, is also available.
Thank you, David. Do any Commissioners have questions? Secretary?
I have a few questions for staff. As it relates to the whole concept that we're going to be receiving a new update, which would eliminate these variances, which makes sense, and looking forward to that, I was kind of interested in knowing how we got to a finished floor of 17.33. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry, I wanted to, let me back up. Was this the first one since the FEMA action took place that's being presented in this area, which creates the situation that we're seeing? The first home?
Good evening, Jaime Emory, principal planner. There's one under construction that was able to accommodate access without the need for a variance, but this would be the first case with a variance.
Because the variance is just requesting those two areas of encroachment?
Correct.
So, that makes sense. I guess my question is that if FEMA is designating a 15, and we're doing 17.33, is the difference that whatever the structural member underneath, and I saw a comment about freeboard, is that what's driving that, just to get all the way up to 17.33?
Yes, Commissioner Rosin, that's correct. You have the base flood elevation at 15, and then you have a one-foot freeboard, takes you to 16, and then the finished floor would be another foot and change, so it leaves you to 17.33.
Okay.
And that's required by FEMA, yeah.
That kind of leads me to my next question, because this situation exists other places in the city where FEMA has designated a base flood elevation, and this one requires a modification at some point to our underlying code. And we've identified where we're going to raise it to a new base floor. I'm just wondering, because what that does is it creates 29-foot overall height from that base floor elevation, so this home is going to be a solid 5 feet higher than anything else in the neighborhood, which you mentioned, and I appreciated that. What's interesting about the 29 feet, and I understand how the 29 feet works probably too well, and in other places in the city, we're being forced, I shouldn't use that What's happening is that there's a requirement to kind of scrunch the house down, as opposed to here, we're raising it up to 17.33 and saying, "Go from 29 feet from here." And I'm just wondering if that's something that's considered in the new code that we're going to bring up, or if that's even been thought of yet?
Yeah, so, in terms of measuring height, we typically measure building height from the existing grade.
Right.
That existed on the property prior to construction. The exceptions are for properties that are located in flood zones, and so you're correct. There's other flood zones in the city that aren't VE designated, but they're flood zone like AE 8 and 9.
Right.
The construction standards for those, under the FEMA requirement, are a little different, and so in those cases, those properties only have to have a finished floor at around 8 or 9. We also have a minimum standard that all new structures in the city have to be measured from 9, and so finished floors have to be constructed at 9, and we do allow for the measurement of building height to be taken from any required raised finished floor for FEMA standards. VE is just a little different in that the construction standards require that additional foot of freeboard and a different sort of structural standard, and so that's why significantly higher, but the way we measure height is still consistent. So, in this case, the 17.33 finished floor is the minimum standard and is the basis for height.
Okay, so it has to do with the VE designation and how that all works. It was just very interesting to me, so I wanted to ask how that's going to work in the future. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners?
I just have a quick question, and if the resolution here was approved tonight, and it was really under conditions of approval number 10, and I was going through that, it looked just a little, let me just say, a little heavy-handed in terms of, like, zero construction allowed for any shoreline protection or anything, and that actually being recorded untitled. If you could just walk me through what was the reasoning for that? I guess construction, so if a person put sandbags, that wouldn't be considered constructions in, say, in terms of a severe storm that came, but just why something like this actually needs to be actually on title and waiving your rights to protect your property?
Right, this is a standard condition that we apply in all coastal development permits that are waterfront or on a bluff, and this is actually required in our local coastal program, and is required pursuant to the Coastal Act. And so, you know, to be with Coastal Commission, the Coastal Act wants to protect the beach for public access in the future, and in looking at, if you'd sell protected device, let's say a wall, and there's future sea level rise, then in the future, there's potential to lose the beach, and that's an issue regarding public access, and so that's why it's a standard condition that's applied in all these cases.
Okay, so, I guess, like, a sandbag, so that's temporary, so that wouldn't count. I just didn't know how far this would carry on, but for temporary...
Right, this would really be intended for the construction of a seawall in the future.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's my question.
Commissioner Wagen.
Isn't the proper term managed retreat? I just had a question. A comment from the public came in kind of late, so it wasn't printed out for Commissioners, but it talked about trash cans, and since Commissioner Ketting is no longer here, I think I've taken that standard bearer of discussing trash cans, but it did have a great point saying that, where are the trash cans? How would they be moved between the two? Is that something that would be stored in the garage, or do you have just an explanation to that?
Yes, Commissioner Wagen. So, on the plans in the staff report, currently, the trash cans are located behind the stairs, so that was the neighbor's concern, is how do they get a wheel it over the stairs onto the street? However, speaking with the applicant, they've notified us that it's going to be placed in front of the stairs, so that it's easier access to wheel it out to the street, and the neighbor was concerned about the trash, because there's no fence currently. So, I believe the applicant is willing to build a fence there, and that's what they've, you know, they've let us know, that that's part of the plan, and so to screen the trash, that's a requirement by the code, to screen it from the street, and so those are the things that are addressing the comments from the neighbor.
And that's satisfying to staff, or does that need to be spelled out in any conditions, or is that just a simple process that, since they signed off on, or gave you notice that that's what they would do? Does that need to be added to anything, or is that good?
Yeah, it's actually a code requirement in our zoning code in LCP that trash has to be screened, and so during the plan check process, that's when those details are identified.
Perfect, cool, thanks.
Anyone else on the Commission? Okay, ex-party communications, we'll start with Commissioner Wagen.
I have none.
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 None for me. Okay, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant have a presentation, or did you want to address the question about trash or any other?
Neighbor across the street from the project.
Could you state your name, please?
Yeah, Mark Geiger. I live at 4608 Seashore. My only concern, I'm excited for the project, by the way, project. My only concern is I have a little view that goes through the...
Oh, sorry, this is just for the applicant's presentation at this point?
Okay.
We'll come back to public comments in a minute. Do we have the applicant here?
My name's Frank Stoltz with South Coast Architects. Good evening, Commissioners. David, Jaime, thank you for helping us going through this process. It was a difficult one because of these new regulations to do with FEMA and the flood zone, but to answer the question regarding the trash situation, my client did reach out to the neighbor today to discuss how they could come to agreement, and they both agreed that they will keep no fence between the two structures, the two homes, but they will be requiring a gate between the two, and the trash itself will be on the front side facing seashore, so it's easy to accommodate onto the street.
Great, thank you for clarifying that. Does anyone have any other questions for the applicant while he's here? And while you're standing there, if I could ask you if you are in agreement with all of the recommended conditions?
We are.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll go back to public comment.
Mark Geiger, I have a property at 4608 Seashore, and we're excited for the project. I think it's going to be a great project. My only concern is the setback, building into the setback. David mentioned there might be a chimney or something, and that was my only concern for my view. I have a view, kind of, not a great view, but it's a view between the two properties, adjoining properties, so I don't know how that, I couldn't see from the rendering how that was going to affect me, because it kind of looked like it might, but I'm on the left I did a remodel project last year, actually, I think it was 2019, 2020, just to enclose a carport into a garage, and I had to move the garage over 6 inches to put garage doors on a carport. So, I'm like, how are they going to build into the setback, when I couldn't even just put a simple garage door on a 1960s building? So, that's my concern.
Thank you for your comment.
Chair Kleiman, members of the Commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. I had three comments. Number one, I'm curious why the VE ordinance that would allow this project to be probably approved without any need for variances has taken so long? From the staff report, it appears it's been three years, and it's still not here. Three years seems a long time to prepare an ordinance. A second comment is about the side setback and the stairs being built in it. Quite aside from Mr. Geiger's view issue, which I, obviously, not impacted by those stairs, I thought the purpose of side setbacks and keeping them clear of development was in part to provide fire access around buildings, and so is the idea here that those stairs, since they kind of have an up and a downside, would not be a permanent obstruction to firemen needing to get by that side. They could climb up and climb down, so it's not a serious permanent obstruction, or am I misunderstanding what side backs are for? And then the final comment, which I submitted to you in writing, is just to remind you that this is a coastal development permit. I have no idea if anybody at the Coastal Commission will be paying attention to the notice of the city's approval of this, but if it did get appealed to the Coastal Commission, I think there's almost no chance that the plan as proposed would survive an appeal there, because they do not regard the replacement of a duplex with anything less than a duplex is consistent with the city's, with California's current housing crisis and the mandate they feel they have from the state legislature. So, even an ADU would be problematic, and a junior ADU even more so. So, you're free to approve the project, but if it did get appealed, it probably would need major revision, so that it would be two permanent complete dwelling units of comparable size to what was there currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Does the applicant have anything to add or respond to?
I guess, in responding to both comments that were presented tonight, the first one initially to do with the component that is moving into the side setback, that is indeed the fireplace.
to do with the component that is moving into the side setback, that is indeed the fireplace. And from all the understanding we have with the design guidelines that are part of the city of Newport, we have the light to encroach one foot into that area. And that is a big bonus to giving us the opportunity to design in a very small width space. Otherwise, these fireplaces would encroach handsomely into those areas, up to two to three feet. So, that is the reason we chose to go forward with this based upon the way the guidelines are written, written in the planning department, for that fireplace. And regarding the stairs, I do believe, and I can't be certain, but we do have complete access without any obstructions to the right side. I believe that is only required to one side of the building as far as having access for the fire department, for anyone to get from front to back of the home.
Thank you. Okay, anything that staff wants to clarify or respond to? Particularly, Mr. Mosher's comment that was, I know we've seen other applications where we are replacing a duplex with a single-family unit plus, I think, the applications we've seen have been for accessory dwelling units, not junior accessory. And I'm not, I can't recall if those were in the coastal zone or not, but could you speak to that?
Yeah, definitely. So, under state law, it's supposed to be 330, which was adopted last year. They've added, actually, a few years back, a known net loss requirement. So, any new housing development projects can't reduce the number of units that existed at the time. And so, there's a duplex on the property today, so any new development would have to be replaced with at least two units. State law does allow for replacement units to be ADUs or junior ADUs. We've actually confirmed with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and they've confirmed that for the city. And they're the state agency with the authority to implement that state law. Coastal Commission has expressed some concerns that ADUs are not adequate replacement housing, particularly in their own review of coastal development permits. They've also shared some of their concerns on projects here at the city. However, we have permitted a number of single families with ADUs and junior ADUs. In fact, David can speak to a project that we recently approved at the zoning administrator level that is very similar, which was a duplex and to be redeveloped with a single family in a junior accessory dwelling unit, or JADU. Coastal did initially raise some concerns, however, they did not appeal that project. And so, that project is now final and effective.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions for staff before I close the public hearing?
Thank you. So, I want to go back to the future variance, or the future prod... Help me out here. This is the ordinance that we're going to have come before us. I know this is guessing, frankly, but assuming that that moves forward, we don't know whether or not, at this point in time, that putting the stair in the side and front would be a variance again. And that could be. So, I guess I just was wondering if that, I know that we kind of talked about it, that it is the reason that we're here tonight to talk about it. I'm wondering if the CDP and all of that are going to include that. I have a little bit of a question about whether or not you absolutely need these stairs in order to make it work. But I understand what the reasoning behind it. So, I guess, where you end up, we're creating something, a standard, almost, by saying that this is allowable on all the future projects that won't require. Setting that precedent, I guess that's where my head is at, is setting that precedent, because I think it is possible. But that's not what was brought before us tonight. So, I guess for the record, that's my statement.
Any response there? I think the question is, is it actually a necessity? I guess the applicant could move the stairs to an interior location, but they would lose I don't know how much, and if it's a significant amount of floor area.
So, thank you, Commissioner Rosine and Madam Chair Kleiman. So, we always advise the applicants for properties in the VE zone, that, you know, our ordinance is not done yet, we haven't changed the code. So, to comply with code, you have two options: shrink the design or file the variance. We've had, as Jaime said, that, you know, one applicant didn't want to roll the dice and file the variance, they just shrunk it down. And so, they lost square footage, but that's what they wanted to do. This applicant has given similar choices. They've decided to apply for the variance, because we think we can support and make the findings, because it is in the VE zone. Does the stairs have to be there? Probably not. Could they change the design? Sure, and lose the square footage. But they've decided to ask the commission, we've made the, we've drafted the staff report, made our recommendations, so now the decision's up to you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it up to the commission for discussion or any motions. Not everyone at once.
I think my position on this is, we just have to stay, in my opinion, stay focused with the plan that's in front of us, the application, the applicant filled out an application, it's their right. I can find the findings of the staff report accurate, and I think it's deserving of the variance, and that'll be my position.
I'll second, well, second, but I'll agree with Commissioner Elmore's, that I, you know, I believe the findings have been met, and I can, you know, validate all the findings that staff has made, and I would be voting for this.
I'm going to make a motion to approve it as drafted. So, I'll make a motion to approve, let's see, the Gannon Residence PA 2021-305 with the conditions of approval.
I'll second.
Call for the vote? Okay, item number four, the Gannon Residence. We'll hear from staff first.
Good evening, Chair Kleiman and commissioners. Chelsea Crigger with the Planning Division. I'll just get my PowerPoint pulled up. The application that you have before you here is the Gannon Residence. It's a coastal development permit, including a request for additional height. It is not a variance application, but an request for additional height that I'll detail a little bit later. And it's located at 20 Bay Island. So, as I mentioned, this is a coastal development permit. It also includes a parking management plan and a request for height up to 33 feet. A vicinity map here is a location of Bay Island. The subject property or building site is highlighted in red. Bay Island is very unique, to put it lightly. Bay Island is one single property. It's operated as a stock co-op. And on that property are individual building sites. They are not individual properties. They're individual, single-family homes, and they are individual building sites. But the island itself is one singular property. This image illustrates that a little bit better. The red dashed line is the property line. The brown rectangles are those individual building sites. So, that's an important distinction for when we look at the development standards of our zoning code and our local coastal program implementation plan, or our IP. So, we have two codes kind of to look at here, two sets of development standards. The first is Title 21, or, excuse me, Title 20, our zoning code. And in that case, for that, for Title 20, there's a use permit. It was a planned residential development that was approved for Bay Island back in the 90s. And that created some development standards that are very specific to this island. And those development standards are based around those identified building sites. Now, what happens within those building sites beyond those development standards identified in the use permit is largely up to the CCNRs and the HOA. The second code that we look at is Title 21. That's our implementation plan. It implements our coastal zoning standards. So, our coastal, our coastal zone here is RM, which is multiple-unit residential. And the development standards related to those, those development standards are really based around the single property, so really more related to that red dashed line, and treating the island as one singular property. So, we'll start with Title 20. So, we'll look at the use permit, which I mentioned, it really looks at the individual building sites. So, the setbacks here are from the building site line. The maximum floor area is based on the buildable area of the individual building site. The parking requirement is provided entirely off-site. So, Bay Island, as you may know, is not accessible by vehicle. It's accessed by pedestrian bridge and golf carts. So, parking is provided off-site. At 501 West Bay, there's a parking structure, and two spaces are required per residence there. The use permit also identifies height requirements. So, the maximum height allowed by right by the use permit is 24 feet for flat roofs, 29 feet for sloped roofs. However, the use permit states that the planning commission can approve up to a height of 28 feet for flat roofs or 33 feet for sloped roofs. In this case, the project is designed to about 32 and a half feet. But the approval as written would be for 33 feet, which is what the use permit allows. While we're talking about height, I do have some elevations here. This is the front, as viewed from the water. We have the 33 feet maximum for the sloped portion, as well as the 28-foot for the flat portion. And this is a side elevation. Where on the left side of your screen is the side that faces the ocean, and the right side is where, what faces the island interior. And we once again have the maximum heights for sloped and flat roof portions called out. Next, we look at Title 21. So, separate development standards, and these look at the island as one entire property. So, the setback here is from the property line, which is a 20-foot from the island property line. The maximum allowed floor area is for the entirety of the island, for all development on the island. And parking in Title 21 is required as three spaces for residences of this size. So, in this case, the parking management that is proposed to account for those three spaces is those two spaces that are off-site at 501 West Bay, and one that is provided on-site as a golf cart parking space, since those are the only vehicles that can be driven on the island itself. Title 21 allows 28 feet for flat roofs and 33 feet for sloped roofs by right. But the parking management plan that I mentioned, once again, the use permit requires two spaces in this off-site structure, which is shown in the image. The implementation plan, Title 21, requires three spaces on-site, and the proposed parking management plan is those two spaces in the structure and one golf cart parking space on-site. That off-site parking is provided at 501 West Bay, so you can see a path of travel here. It's less than a quarter mile away, so that would be where they would walk or drive a golf cart to get to those parking spaces. The golf cart parking space that's proposed here is in a garage, and this is an exhibit the applicant has provided, showing how the homeowners would get a golf cart into their golf, golf cart garage, into their parking space. So, you'll see it travels down this path. This path is regulated by the CCNRs. It's regulated by the HOA. It's not regulated by our development standards in Title 20 or in Title 21. The city did notice the project in compliance with our municipal code, and the recommended action is that, conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA pursuant to Class 3, which is new construction or conversion of small structures, and adopt a resolution approving the coastal development permit. One comment letter did come in, has been circulated to the planning commissioners. If the commission would like us to respond, we are able to do so. This concludes my presentation. The applicant, Kennedy, here of Brandon Architects is here. The homeowners are also present if you have any questions, and I'm also available for questions.
Thank you, Chelsea. If you could just respond to the noticing comment in that letter that you just referenced?
Sure. So, the comment in the letter mentions that there was not adequate notice of the project's consideration and approval by the HOA Board of Directors. The city does not regulate how the HOA may choose to notify its members, and we notify of the public hearing consistent with our municipal code.
Thank you. Are there any commissioners that have questions for staff at this time?
Just real quick, in terms of clarification, that, and I'm pretty sure I got the right orientation, but if you go across the bridge, that access point for the garage is directly off of that primary road. Or is it not?
It is off the side. So, if you follow, I know it's a little bit crude here, but if you follow my mouse, you'd kind of come around like this, and then it would come through like that. So, it would kind of go through a side.
Any other questions for staff and commissioners?
Thanks.
Report on ex-party communication?
Yes, I reached out to a representative of Brandon Architects to ask about the merits of this, the letter from the attorney that we received, public comment.
None for me.
None for me.
None for me.
None.
And none for me. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant have a presentation that they would like to make?
No, we're available to answer.
Okay. Do you want to just go ahead and come up and introduce yourself and let me know if you accept all of the conditions?
Hi, planning commissioners. Brandon Lensey from Brandon Architects, here to say that we do accept the conditions from planning-supported staff approval. And we do also have confirmed receipts for the HOA notification, certificate of the mailing that went out to all the adjacent neighbors required by the HOA. We also do have the HOA's approval as well. So, we are here available to help answer any questions, if any were to come up.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant from commissioners? Okay. We'll open up two comments from the public. Anyone like to comment on this item at this time?
Chair Kleiman, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I just had some minor comments. I was a little puzzled reading page handwritten five of the staff report, reference that Bay Island was first established prior to 1936. I have no idea what 1936 has to do with, because according to that very reliable source, the Wikipedia, there were homes on Bay Island as early as 1907. So, I do not know what happened in 1936 that is being referenced. As to the resolution itself, Section 1.1, and this is a minor technical point, but it describes the subject property located at 20 Bay Island. It says it's legally described as S Township 6, Range 10, Section 34. I tried to decipher what that means, and that is not at all a legal description defining what lot, what 20 Bay Island is. The system of townships, not to bore you, but it's a system of surveying the western lands of the United States, attributed to Thomas Jefferson back in the 1780s. And this is not even technically correct. I don't even know what S Township means, but it is Township 6 South, 10 West, and Section 34 of that. But that's just a way of telling you how far it is away from the peak of San Bernardino Mountain, which is the meridian used to define the township. And Section 30- And section 34 is a one square mile area, one mile on a side, which includes Bay Island, but includes much else of Newport Beach. So it's not a legal description of the property. I don't know if it has a legal description. And then the final comment, probably equally trivial, is in the findings for the coastal development permit, on the next page, 116. The first fact in support of finding makes it sound like you are finding this to conform to the local coastal program because the development standards are authorized by the use permit, UP 3618. And I think, as Chelsea pointed out, that use permit is not part of the local coastal program. It is something that was established many years before. You have a copy of it here. It's from the 1990s. I don't believe it's ever been reviewed or certified as part of our local coastal program by the coastal commission. So the fact that the standards are authorized by the use permit is really, I think, irrelevant to, to whether it conforms to the local coastal program or not. So perhaps that statement needs some minor tweaking. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I'm assuming there are no other public comments. Does staff want to respond to any of those comments?
Um, I'm, I don't recall which, if the legal, I'm sure the legal description is correct, but I can certainly verify it before we finalize the document.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'm ready to make a motion to, uh, adopt a resolution, PC 2022-17, and, uh, make the findings as is and the recommendations as is.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote? The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our next item, the study session for code update related to accessory dwelling units.
Madam Chair, if we could get a motion to continue, open the public hearing on the density bonus.
Just not going to get that one right tonight, am I?
No, no, no problem.
Thank you. My apologies. Revisiting item number five, the density bonus zoning code and LCP amendments. Staff has requested this item be continued to the planning commission meeting on July 21st. I will open the public hearing. Take public comments at this time?
If we could just get a motion to continue, motion and a second and then continuing.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to continue. Just make a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue.
And I'll second.
And that would be to the July 21st, 2022, planning commission meeting.
Correct.
Call for the vote? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, Jaime, back to you. Study session on item number six, code updated related to accessory dwelling units.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Again, my name is Jaime Morillo, Principal Planner. Uh, we want to take this opportunity, uh, with the study session to update the planning commission as a whole on the efforts that, uh, city staff and the hard work that the planning commission ad hoc committee, uh, has spent on working, on developing, uh, amendments to the city's zoning code and local coastal program, uh, related to accessory dwelling units or ADUs, uh, with the focus on incentivizing their development. At the conclusion of the study session, I would just seeking feedback from the commission as a whole, uh, with our direction moving forward. Uh, just a little bit of background, uh, this effort really started, uh, as a direction from city council, uh, through council policy K4. Uh, this is, um, a direction to, for staff to work with the planning commission on revising our development standards related to accessory dwellings, again, to be more permissive, uh, with the focus on incentivizing their development. Uh, the reason this is important is because it's been identified as a major tool and strategy towards meeting our state-manded housing, uh, regional housing needs allocation, which is approximately 4,800, uh, new units in the next eight-year planning period. Uh, within our housing element, uh, we've identified, uh, ADUs as a major tool. Uh, actually, uh, plans for at least 240, uh, new ADUs in this period, but any additional ADUs that are constructed, uh, helps reduce the city's overall rezoning requirements, uh, to address our arena, uh, housing needs. Uh, back in September of 2021, uh, staff shared a number of ideas to amend the code, uh, with this focus. At the conclusion of that study session, uh, the planning commission determined that it'd be more appropriate to develop an ad hoc committee to discuss and analyze, uh, the ideas in more detail. And so, uh, that ad hoc committee consisted of Chair Climen, uh, and Commissioners Lowry and Wigan. Uh, since that last point, uh, study session, the ad hoc committee held a total of five meetings. Uh, we've also held a meeting, uh, with the ad hoc committee and members of the design and, and, uh, construction community. And just want to thank, uh, architects Brian Jeanette and Chris Brandon and Brian Burke of Burke Brothers Construction who participated in that meeting. Uh, the feedback generally that we received from the ad hoc committee is that, um, any code amendment that we do pursue should be done carefully. Uh, we want to make sure that although we want to incentivize the development of ADUs, we want to make sure that it's not going to result in additional building bulk or result in, uh, development that's out of character with the community. Uh, and so it's, it's important to, uh, draft these code amendments carefully. Uh, one thing to note is that due to the new state laws, any code amendments that we do pursue, if we become too flexible, it's going to be very difficult to rein, uh, those standards back in the future, uh, due to SB 330, which is a housing law. Uh, and overall, ADUs are not going to be the, the complete solution to our regional housing needs. Uh, it's simply just a tool to help. But in terms of feedback from the, the architects and the building community, uh, they really feel that the, the greatest incentive that can be provided that would incentivize ADUs is an allowance for additional floor area. But again, that would lead to additional building bulk. Uh, they also suggested we focus on, uh, building code incentives outside of, uh, the zoning code and LCP amendments. Uh, we also shared ideas with the community at a March 23rd community meeting. And it was fairly well-attended. It was held via Zoom, um, approximately 50 attendees or so. It's worth to note that many of the attendees at that community meeting were property owners seeking to construct, uh, accessory dwelling units or, uh, consultants or design professionals, uh, associated with the construction of new ADUs. And so the feedback we did receive from that community meeting was, again, uh, we should allow for increased sizes of ADUs, um, and exempting ADUs from the floor allowances. They also supported, uh, basement ADU access, which I'll explain in more detail later. Uh, as far as replacement parking requirements in the coastal zone, they suggested allowing parallel parkings in the alley, uh, which is a concern for staff just due to access and, uh, fire safety through the alleys. They also suggested streamlining the approval process in the coastal zone and eliminating the owner occupancy requirements permanently. So currently, um, our code requires that any new ADU or JADU be owner occupied. Uh, state law currently suspended that for ADUs until the year 2025. And so the suggestion is to permanently remove that restriction, and that would allow for more investors to build, uh, single-family residences with ADUs or duplexes with ADUs and not be owner occupied. And so what I'm doing next is just share, uh, kind of the six key ideas we had for code amendments. Uh, that was discussed with the ad hoc committee and the design committee, uh, as well as the, the public in the community meetings. Uh, and then I'll explain, uh, kind of the recommendations we got, or feedback we received from the community and the recommendations we got from the ad hoc committee. Uh, so this first idea relates to basements. Currently under the zoning code, uh, subterranean basement does not count towards allowable floor area. And so when we say subterranean basement, it's entirely, uh, below grade with no exterior access. And so from the public, it's not visible, nobody knows, it doesn't add bulk. Uh, but as soon as, oh, let me go back. Um, it's not currently used for ADUs because ADUs need to have exterior access. And so as soon as you add exterior access to a subterranean basement, it gets redefined as a daylighting basement, in which case it now counts as floor area. And so the idea is to allow for very limited access, uh, for the subterranean basements that are developed with ADUs, uh, and not count them against the floor allowances. Again, um, it won't add to significant visual bulk or mass, as long as the access is kind of regulated and controlled. Um, according to the design community, this adds a lot of value, which outweighs the construction costs associated with basements. Uh, and so it's a big incentive. So overall, uh, the design and public supported this idea as well as our ad hoc, uh, committee. Uh, the second idea had to do with the size of accessory dwelling units. Typically, our regulations limit ADUs to a maximum of 850 square feet for, uh, s- one bedrooms or studios and 1,000 square feet for anything larger than, uh, two bedrooms or larger. Um, but there is one, uh, standard, so for ADUs that are attached to a principal dwelling, there's an additional restriction that the ADU can't be more than 50% of the size of that principal dwelling. Uh, the idea was to eliminate that one standard that would help simplify our zoning code, uh, eliminates an additional constraint and helps ADU construction for smaller units. Uh, and that was, again, uh, universally accepted and supported by the public and the design community, and our ad hoc committee recommended pursuing that amendment as well. Uh, the third idea was to allow for additional height for detached ADUs. Our current regulations state that detached ADUs, uh, should not exceed a height of 16 feet. Uh, however, we have one incentive in our code now that allows for an additional height up to 29 feet if the ADU is constructed above a garage and the entire property is compliant, uh, with parking, so not just ADU, but also the, the main dwelling. Um, we've received some comments from the design community that it's a little restrictive and that we should allow for that additional height, uh, above any garage, uh, because we're still adding parking to the overall property, even though the total property is in 100% compliant with the parking requirements. Uh, however, our ad hoc committee did, uh, recommend not pursuing this, uh, as it would result in additional opportunities for just massing, uh, but there's more of a concern that, you know, allowing, uh, ADUs above garages does result in some privacy issues with neighbors. Uh, the fourth idea has to do with adding additional floor area. Uh, currently under state law and our regulations, if a site is entirely, um, maxed out in terms of floor area or lot coverage, and there's no opportunities to build an ADU, state law says that the city has to allow at least a construction of an 800 square foot ADU, uh, no taller than 16 feet. Uh, the design community, a lot of property owners have, uh, requested that we allow that 800 square feet or in any additional square footage, um, in conjunction with new development. And so the position from the city has always been, uh, if you're redeveloping a property, there's no constraints to the development of ADU, and they should be incorporated into the overall floor area allowances for that property as a whole. And that would maintain kind of a bulk and compatibility with the character, I'm sorry, uh, maintaining, yeah, competitive with the character of the community. Again, this is something that the design community and members, some, some members of the public have supported, uh, but our ad hoc committee recommended against this, again, as it would, uh, definitely add more bulk and scale. Um, and this would also kind of undermine the recent efforts we've had in trying to reduce third floor, uh, massing with past that code amendment efforts. Uh, the fifth idea was to provide more flexibility with ADUs depending on lot size. I think initially we thought maybe we can regulate the size of ADUs so that it'd be smaller on smaller lots such as Incredomar, and then allow larger ADUs on larger lots. Uh, but you, under state law, we can't restrict the size of ADUs any smaller than 850 square feet and 1,000 square feet, depending on bedroom count. Uh, so the opportunity would be to allow for larger ADUs, maybe as a percentage of lot size up to a certain number, like 2,000 square feet. But I think generally everyone thought that, um, this already complicates a, a very complicated code that we already have, and that a 1,000 square foot ADU is, is more than adequate for something that should be considered an accessory unit. Uh, and the last idea was to waive the parking requirements in the coastal zone. So currently, outside the coastal zone, if somebody wants to convert their garage into an ADU, there's no replacement parking requirements. But within the coastal zone, we do have, uh, the coastal act to follow. And so our code currently does prohibit, uh, garage conversions if they're not able to replace the parking onsite in some other configuration. Um, we have received a lot of requests from developers and investors who are seeking to purchase a duplex and then convert that garage into a third unit. But I think, again, this one was universally felt that, uh, it's not a good idea, and we shouldn't pursue it, uh, as parking demands in our beach community is already tight, and this would only exacerbate that issue. Uh, I did want also just point out, there is, uh, three major ADU bills in the pipeline now. Uh, we have been tracking them and they're progressing, um, you know, through the process, and they're essentially being supported. And so, uh, we definitely think there's going to be changes to state law related to ADUs. Uh, a lot of the changes actually have to do with some of the ideas we were suggesting, uh, including increasing, uh, the minimum heights for ADUs that we can restrict, uh, waiving fire sprinkler requirements, further reducing the parking requirements for ADUs, um, and even including some significant amnesty allowances for unpermitted units that can be converted to ADUs, uh, and even allowing for ADUs in front setbacks. And so these are all considered really major revisions that we'd have to make to the code. And so staff would recommend that we wait to see, uh, how these bills progress through the legislature so that we can pursue one amendment that incorporates both state law changes and, uh, any recommendations from the planning commission. Uh, I do just wanted to point out, we do have a, a number of other incentives that the city is providing. Uh, typically, any new unit would require to have a separate sewer and water connection. Uh, this does add a lot of cost to development, and so the city, uh, is waiving that separate sewer and water connection to help reduce costs. Uh, we also have a temporary plant check permit and any other city fee waiver program. Uh, and this was really intended to incentivize the construction of ADUs, however, it is going to conclude at the end of 2022. And so this is something that staff would consider, uh, extending and working with our city council. Uh, and also I just want to highlight some of the other activities we've been working on, um, and future incentives. So the city is working on revamping our ADU website, uh, to make it really more user-friendly. And on that top right corner is just a little snapshot of that future website. Uh, and there's a lot more to come, including workbooks for, uh, property owners seeking to build ADUs and information for builders. So we'll, we'll definitely share more when the website is more ready. Uh, we've also been working on the development of pre-approved, pre-approved ADU plans. And so you can see the snapshots of some of the ADUs we've been working on. And so the idea is to have a model that's a studio, a model that's a flexible studio or one bedroom, and then garage conversion plans. Uh, each of the models would have, uh, three different exterior options they can select. And then within those options, they can choose to have the patio or some different exterior materials. Uh, but the idea behind that is we would have, um, permit-ready plans, uh, they would just have to hire a contractor, uh, to build these units, and that should speed up the process for these property owners, uh, and definitely reduce the costs. And so that really concludes my presentation. As I mentioned, staff's going to continue monitoring the ADU legislation. Uh, August 31st is the deadline to pass the bills, and so we'll have a pretty good idea of, of what these new, um, state law is going to be. And then the governor has till September 30th. And so with that, then we'll begin preparing the amendments and incorporate, uh, the recommendations we've received from the ad hoc committee, uh, revisions from state law, and then any additional input or comments from the planning commission tonight, uh, we'll be able to incorporate. And then we'll bring it all back for public hearings to the planning commission, city council. council, and then for those properties in the coastal zone, we'll also have to take it back to the California Coastal Commission. So that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Jaime. As you said, Commissioners Weigand, Lowry, and I had a chance to participate in a lot of this outreach. And I think I can speak for all of us when I say we're just amazed by the work that you've done on this and tackling, not just understanding it, but trying to balance the needs of, you know, meeting Rina and adding units with the needs of the existing community. So thank you, and thank you for the thorough presentation. Do we have any questions or comments?
I had one question. By the way, the preapproved plans, I think, is a great idea. So whoever came up with that, that's that's genius. You had one comment up there who said that the recommendation was to expedite in the coastal zone. And I didn't understand what's what typically slows an ADU permit down in the coastal zone versus a non-coastal zone?
So there's some properties that we can exclude from a coastal development permit, but for the properties that we're not able to, they have to go through the coastal development permit review process and make similar findings, similar to the ones we made earlier in those those prior items on the agenda. We do have the ability to waive the the public hearing in some cases, and so that would help expedite it. But overall, it is still a lengthy process if a coastal development permit's required. And so other ideas are to pursue an LCP amendment where we try to create more exclusions or exemptions for certain ADUs, but we'd have to work with the coastal commission on that.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Weigand? Just wanted to take a moment to thank Commissioner Chair Kleiman and Commissioner Lowry, Jaime, Simone, and staff for for the hard work on this. We, like I said, met five plus times and had community meetings on it. I think going into it, we wanted to find more avenues to increase the amount of ADUs because of the Rina numbers. We were hoping that that could help alleviate some of the potential overdevelopment that the state's kind of putting down on us. But seeing some of the other options then brought us bulk and massing and privacy issues with neighborhoods. So we we wanted to keep our charm of our community. So I think we found some good solutions. It won't save the day, but as as Jaime said, but at least it adds to some of those numbers. And then I think it's smart to wait to see what the legislature does so we can kind of do this all in one, because every year there's going to come up with new ADU things. So it's going to be a constant evolving process with ordinances on ADUs. That's always going to be changing based on what the state's going to be throwing down on us. So I just wanted to thank staff for the hard work, the commissioners, part of the ad hoc. And I think it's pretty thorough. And I'm, once we hear from Mr. Mosher maybe on this, but, you know, seeing that there's no other members of the public here to talk about this item, I think we've kind of done a thorough job getting us to this point so that the public is comfortable of of what we're going to do. And then when we see this item coming up later in the fall, it'll be, should be fairly routine to approve. So thanks again.
Terry?
I wanted to echo all of those things. I think that staff's doing a great job with this, and so thank you very much. And the committee, the ad hoc committee, obviously, a lot of ideas got thrown around, and it was interesting to hear those and to, I like the direction that I think I heard. And I really just wanted to, as a follow up statement that I thought I wanted to really hang on to that I heard, Jaime, thank you, was the compatibility in in the neighborhoods and the character. And I think that that's, those are really important to, at least to me personally. And so that I I wanted to say thank you for that.
I'll have to add my thanks as well to to the commissioners here that were all able to participate, especially the staff. And Jaime, you did such a great job and yeoman's work on so much of the content here and all of our ideas back and forth. I really appreciate that. And, you know, excited about all the things that that we're going to look forward as 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 kind of this, these ordinances and these things evolve through through the state. But what I'm really excited about, or one of the things specifically for me, is is the, you know, options of using basements more. I come from a private sector life, do a lot with basements. And in growing up here in California, you don't have as much of that option, but kind of bringing that now to to get more floor and whatnot, it's a, it's, I think it'll be a nice addition to add add to livable space as we move forward. So thank you so much.
You're up again.
I wanted to add something to that. That was the one question that I didn't bring up, but the idea of basements is kind of, it is different here in California. It's it's a little bit unusual, and I was trying to picture where that could have, how that could work. And there were a couple of ideas that I had at the back of my mind, but really, it was at the end of the day with floor area calculation, how much of the property needed to, the basement needed to be undergrounded, and being very specific with how we define that, I think could be really beneficial if you define it in the code and it's, it's the definitions that we are, that we need to follow. So clarity on that, I think, could be really helpful and could end up creating the use of basements potentially where there is maybe some grade on the side or something like that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? I'll just add one more thing for discussion here. Can you just talk numbers quickly? How many applications we've had for ADUs or JADUs in this cycle? And add to that kind of the response that we had from coastal commission initially after we first thought we would target a larger number of ADUs to try to meet that Rina?
Yeah, I don't have the breakdown of JADUs versus ADUs with me tonight.
Just ballpark.
I would say maj, a majority are still ADUs, but we do see a number of JADUs as well, particularly, they are being used in cases where there's duplexes and someone wants to build a single family and they need to comply with state law. We do find that JADUs are are tend to be the preference for that purpose. But in total, we have a hundred and two ADUs somewhere in the pipeline. We've final twenty one. There's sixty six have been permitted in some start, some stage of construction. We have fifteen more that are just pending review right now. Most of these, I would say ninety plus would count towards the current Rina cycle that we're in now through the next, you know, eight year period. And so it does look like we're on track. I will caution that thirty of the ADUs that you see have come from one apartment complex that was able to identify some unused square footage that they're able to convert into ADUs. And so that was a significant bump. But our efforts to definitely get the word out, make ADUs a lot more accessible and easier to develop, we're hoping to hit our our target.
Yeah, again, I, we definitely commend you on all of your outreach and education efforts. Just wanted to ask one more question since we saw earlier this evening an application for a JADU as a replacement. Is it safe to assume that that number, because it is a replacement, doesn't go toward the ultimate calculation? Or do we still get credit for that?
Still get credit. So when we we do our annual progress report, reporting to the commission and the council, and then we submit that data to the state, they ask for data on how many ADUs specifically that we're permitting, because ADUs as a housing type is more affordable than a regular, like an apartment unit within a duplex. And so we do get some credit towards the affordability, the lower, the low, very low and moderate income categories that we do need. And then we track the net difference between demolitions and new construction. And so that net difference does go towards our arena as well. So it benefits us still in terms of affordability.
Great. Thank you so much for that. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? This is not a public hearing, but we will take comments at this time.
Thank you for the opportunity, Chair Kleiman. My name again is Jim Mosher. My comments are about the proposal for subterranean ADUs. Building underground is certainly a creative option for adding dwelling units without adding any visible bulk to the city. But the schematic I thought I saw on the slide, somewhat like the seashore approval you had earlier tonight, it looked like the side setback was going to be occupied by stairs. And so I'm wondering if the architect was correct that our building standard only requires access on one side of the building, because it would look like the stairs would completely block any access on that side of the building. And then the second, much bigger concern I have is, aren't there real safety problems with people dwelling in a basement? I seem to recall quite recently, there have been tragic incidents on the East Coast in older cities where rainwater washed into the basements and people were trapped in those subterranean dwellings. So would would we allow a subterranean, would we permit a subterranean ADU in something like Balboa Island or any other area that is potentially subject to flooding? I would think it's not the wisest idea to have people dwelling in that kind of circumstance in those areas, and perhaps even others if if there was really heavy rainfall. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other comments, we'll move on. Item number seven, motion for reconsideration. Hearing none. We will move on to item number eight, report by the community development director or request for matters which a planning commission member would like placed on a future agenda. And if I could first just deviate for one moment and introduce our new commissioner. Tristan Harris is joining us for the first time this evening. If you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and give us a little quick bio.
Sure. Thank you very much. Nice to meet everyone else that I hadn't had a chance to meet or talk to thus far. I appreciate the welcome. I've lived in the city since I was in diapers. I've married, two kids, very young. We live in Newport Heights, and I'm just really excited to to kind of give back and learn a lot here and and get to know everyone, and especially have Mr. Mosher keep me on my toes.
Welcome again. Thank you for the service. Back to our director report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and from staff to the new officers, congratulations to all of you. So that's fantastic for all of you. I do have a few items to update you. So we're really excited that on Monday, July eleventh, we're kicking off our new general plan update steering committee. So we've been kind of in hiatus over here for over two years because of the housing element, and we got to pause the general plan update. So now we're back on it on Monday. So Monday, six P M., we'll be in the community room. That'll be our first meeting where we talk about the status of the general plan and kind of our next steps of hiring consultants, setting schedules. There's a lot of work ahead of us, and so we're taking those, all those housing units that we have in the housing element, and we're going to incorporate them in the land use element and start looking towards master planning of the airport area, West Newport. So this is just the beginning of a very long process for us, so we're excited about that. Something we've been working on like behind the scenes for a couple of years now is we're actually replacing our land management's software. So if you think about, you know, how do we issue permits? How do we track projects? We have old software that's about thirty years old. So we're finally replacing it. It's taken us almost two and a half years to work on this project. And what that will do eventually is we're going to be able to expand our online capabilities to serve more of the development of community. So the goal is to limit how how people come and interact with city hall, so they don't have to come to city hall as much, right? Because everything's going to be much more online. So we're excited about that project that we're going to, our launch date is is Monday. So we're excited launching that and trying to, hopefully, there's no gremlins that are going to kind of, you know, throw us off course. And then on Tuesday, for the city council meeting, the city council is going to consider the ordinance, the SB nine ordinance, and that's an ordinance that you've already looked at and considered and made a recommendation to the council to approve. So city council will have a first opportunity to hear our presentation on SB nine. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Simone. Item number nine, requests for excuse absences. Okay, there are none. Then I guess we will go out, go ahead and adjourn. What time is it? It is seven fifty five.